Meeting of the Eastern City Council. I would like to call this meeting to order. Let us all rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Reverend Williams?
Amen. Precious God, we come right now, no other way but from heart to heart, leaning on your everlasting love. Father, we ask that you put your everlasting arms around the city of Inkster, Father. Bind us together with that love, unity, and strength, Father, that we can be able to love one another. Father, these are my prayers to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wimberly?
Here.
Councilwoman Wiley?
Present.
Councilwoman Washington?
She was on the roster.
Okay. She was on there. Okay. Councilman Shaw? Councilwoman Howard?
You got it.
Councilwoman Howard? Councilman Williams?
Yeah.
And Councilman Chisholm?
Present.
Councilwoman Howard, can you hear me?
I think she's frozen. Oh, there she is.
Okay. We have seven presents in our mirror, and we do have a quorum. Councilwoman Washington was here, okay.
Yeah, we just gotta get her, get her back. We know we're dealing with technology, so we're working on it. Um, can, Mayor Protem, can you hear us? Mayor Protem, can you hear us? Can you look like this?
Yes.
Okay. All right then. So, do we recognize her being here?
Yes. Mayor Councilwoman Washington.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Let's get right into it. I see here that you had, uh, on the agenda, Madam Clerk, a closed session. Do we need to do that now? Or could we do it towards the end of the agenda? I see you have it there as well.
I was gonna say, it's in two places, so it's whatever the pleasure is of the council.
What's your pleasure, Council? All right then, we'll do it at the end of the meeting.
About to say, end of the meeting.
All right, perfect. All right. Approval of the agenda? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? The support?
Support.
Who moved and who supported, please?
Williams and Howard.
All right, perfect. Just for, just because we know that, um, this is a virtual meeting, we need to just state our names as we, um, support or make a motion.
Yes, they started.
Discussion, discussion of the agenda? I actually need to, to make one adjustment to the agenda and add in presentations. We need to talk about scheduling, um, public hearings for the budget, for the budget discussion.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you right in the middle of the meeting, but Mr. Carrington said he's still trying to get through, um, and he cannot get through. No, one ahead. Okay.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, so we'll get him, we'll continue to work on getting him into the meeting. As it relates to, again, as it relates to the agenda, um, for the sake of timing, we need to schedule public hearings for the budget, discussions for the budget for the public. Um, the budget will be submitted to you all on this, even electronically through the treasurer. Um, he will go over, just as it relates to the process of what we've been dealing with, and then, um, talk about a timeline, and you guys will, will talk about some dates, and that way we can get moving on the budget. Um, if we can add that to the agenda.
Okay.
All in favor, all in favor, please. Well, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Yes. Council, Councilmember Wiley?
I'm not sure what I'm speaking to now, to the fact that we need to set dates or what?
We're just gonna add a.
Add a presentation.
Yeah, so we just had a presentation from the treasurer as it relates to the budget and.
That's fine.
Okay. Councilwoman Wiley as a yea. Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
We have six yae's, Mayor Wimberly.
All right, motion carries. Right, here we are. Um, we do have a presentation, um, right off from our director, Phineas. Are you there with? Does it relate to 123net?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Um, were you able to, were you able to put that on the screen for us?
I'll just let Mr. Carrington here.
Hi Darren.
Right, perfect. Go ahead, go ahead, Phineas.
All right. Um, this is our proposal for, um, 123 fiber, um, proposal for the city of Inkster. Just to talk about who 123 is and who they're currently doing business with far as where they have a network and who network they are maintaining or providing, uh, fiber services to, past city Detroit, city of Westland, Southfield, uh, Auburn Hills, um, right here next door, the city of Dearborn, our 911 dispatch is using their, uh, fiber, uh, connections and other ones, uh, cities or universities like Wang State and University of Michigan up in Flint and Baker College. So, this is not a fly-by-night company. They are doing business with or providing fiber services to, um, our, um, surrounding communities, municipalities, and businesses. They're also speaking to those businesses, some, uh, two of the, two out of three of the big three, four and, um, General Motors have already started using this technology, uh, DTE, Google, um, Henry Ford Health Systems. So, again, a lot of big businesses in the state of Michigan is using this fiber connection. So, it don't, it, it helps to bring fiber in to the city of Inkster because a lot of communities and businesses around Inkster are already using fiber that is being provided by 123net. So, the fiber that 123net is proposing to the city of Inkster is an effort to make us more of a smarter city. Um, other cities who have internet connections or fiber connections from 123, um, they have one, maybe two connections. I, uh, propose that we have six connections and to each building, one connection to each location. Um, and doing so, that will give us redundancy and, um, very low risk of having our internet interrupted or fail on us as we have experienced, uh, so many times with our current internet provider. Along with the fiber connections, of these independent fiber connections, we will have a one gigabit interconnection, which is a private network. They call it the SD WAN. So, it's easy for, say, employees at DPS to reach back over here or from the police department to reach back to City Hall, where we got our BSA server without any interruption of, of, of failure to, to get in or, or lost connections or. So, we are able to establish a more of a mesh network and have secure data flow in between each location, six independent, uh, connections. Excuse me. So, 123, um, took immediate attention to the fact that, um, there was a technology source spot at Parks and Rec. And what they wanted to do is offer us two networks out there. One for the employees and one that's completely independent, which we call the community network. This network would allow us to have various, um, technology-based events or communications. This technology will also support having our satellite classes with WC3D out there. Um, virtual town, because we, we look like we're gonna always have this virtual environment. So, we can do virtual hall meetings there. We can also do engaging, um, meetings with the community all while on a separate network from our own employee network. So, in a sense, if the community network happens to get a virus, it would not affect the city's network. That's why they wanted to offer, um, this, um, connection, um, to us to ensure that we have somewhere where we can turn it to a technology hub for the city of Inkster. Again, just explaining what they wanted to do, um, they wanted to provide, 123net wants to provide more than just internet. They're looking at putting Inkster on a platform that's gonna enable us for a long period of time to do various things and, and just keep up with the technology. As it, as it grow, we can grow with it. Um, the Michigan corridor is a very, um, busy, busy place, and it runs straight through our city to other connecting cities. And that will give us opportunity to connect with those cities and be on the same network and share information flawlessly if we have fiber running through the city of Inkster, straight down, um, Michigan corridor here. And again, this is their, their pitch, their proposal, not to just provide internet service, but to have a partnership with the city of Inkster as their future needs come. Um, they wanna make sure that we going above and beyond what we currently have and what may. To that, this is a 10-year contract, um, that's cost, that will cost $4,500 per month. Unfortunately, uh, fiber is not cheap, but it's definitely cheaper than the current $9,000 that we're paying for this, uh, very poor, low-grade circuit that we're current, we're getting from our current provider. Um, and as you see, everyone, since the pandemic, there's more need for internet, more need for bandwidth, and this is just not, it's not going away. The, pretty much this digital environment, this virtual environment is something that we are gonna be, um, in for a long period of time. To that, we need more internet, we need more bandwidth, we need more internet power to, uh, drive our day-to-day operations. And of course, as the demand goes higher and higher for fiber or internet service speeds or bandwidth, the price is gonna go up higher than what we're currently looking at. If we do have an approval to move forward, this would be our team. Uh, I mean, we can go all the way up to the president here. Um, I have his number personally, but anything that we need, any services that, that we need to, um, help us along the way throughout this 10-year partnership, they're, they're willing to do and, and meet those SLAs and make sure that we're, we're happy. As they said in a few emails, they wanted to create a win-win situation for them and the city of Inkster. So, that's pretty much this in a nutshell. I know that there has been, um, conversations with, particularly with Westland, um, just to see what they're doing over there and how they're doing with 123 and the fiber. And recently, we've had communications with, uh, the likes of Dearborn. Uh, Councilman Chisholm, if you don't mind, could you elaborate a bit on the information that we received back from the city of Dearborn as it pertains to the service of 123?
Sure. Um, with the city of Dearborn, excuse me, with the city of Dearborn, they let us know that they do have it present there. Right now, they're using WOW and Comcast as, uh, one of their primaries, their backup, but solely our 911 dispatch center, or not our center, you know, we join with the different communities that use a 911 dispatch center. And the city of Dearborn, that is all powered through 123, uh, fiber net or fiber system, if you will. And that's what gives us that stability and everything there and the fail-safe. So, if something were to go down, uh, they are looking at in the future possibly entertaining it for the rest of their services throughout Dearborn just because they like how the professionalism, I guess, the bandwidth and speed and just the dependability of it all together. And of course, if 911 dispatch center is using that for multiple communities, we know for a fact that that's a very stable, a very capable system to handle all of that stuff, because that's working 24/7 non-stop. And thank you, Councilman. Um, so that, that's pretty much where, where we at with 123. They, they are very reliable. They are expanding throughout, um, Michigan here for cities, municipalities, and businesses. And this is their proposal to start a partnership with us to make sure that we are staying, um, very relevant for our, our technology and how we're using our technology. And we're, they're looking to do it for really, um, a pretty decent price. City of Westland, I know is paying $6,800, but they only have one connection in the city of Westland. And we're gonna get six for a much less, uh, much less price. So, that's my presentation. Is there any questions for me?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just have one question.
Mr. President?
Um, with the 10-year contract, is this something that is across the board throughout all of these communities that you, you may mention in the presentation? Or is there any way that, well, if you could just answer that question?
No, some communities have different needs. The majority of the communities have 10-year, uh, they have the 10-year contracts. Some have 25, 15, um, 30 even. So, 10 years is almost the, the norm. If you want to do a customized, uh, there are, there are cases or, um, contracts out there for, say, three years, but that drives the price up, of course, um, because of the ROA that's behind that. So, you can have them from, but it's, that's not, it's rare to see a three-year contract on fiber. It's normally 10 or, or above.
Now, also, how do we, uh, gauge them in the performance of the fiber and the speed of, of what we're, of what we're going to be paying for? Is there a measurement or is there a gauge that we can gauge them to see, uh, exactly how they're performing? And if so, if they're underperforming, is there any way that we can, if need be, to relinquish the contract?
So, a contract of these magnitudes of fiber contract, again, as I mentioned, the ROA, you have, uh, an investment of X amount of dollars to put your fiber in. This is why the city would not have any upfront construction cost. So, their SLAs state that, for instance, if their connections go down for four hours and not restore, then we get a day's credit. Uh, if it's down for a day, we get a week credit. If it's down seven days straight, the contract is, 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 um, voided, not void. Um, and it, and that's seven days straight. But if it's seven days at any 14-month period, the contract is also, we can just say, we can walk away from.
Did I saw what happened?
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Mayor Protem?
Uh, yes. Um, I thought, okay, so if we go down to a five-year contract, did, did anybody find out what the payments would be if we did go out to five?
Went down to a fire contract, it'd be $8,000 a month.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and then Phineas, this, you, you should too talk about, um, the, the fact that attorney is in contact with their attorney and looking at those options for us.
So, what, what the attorney is, is what we're trying to make sure that we get to make things more comfortable for the city of Inkster within a 10-year period. Um, five years, um, after five years, at any moment on that 60th month, we can say, you know what? We don't want this anymore, and we're not responsible for the remaining 60 months of the contract.
Okay.
But it'll still drive the cost up to 8,000 per month?
Correct.
Okay.
But we don't get that, if we do a five-year deal, we don't get the, the clause, um, at half of the, the, the life of the contract, we can walk away at any time. On a five-year deal, it's just straight $800, I mean, $8,000 a month, and we don't have that clause in place where we can walk away at any time. On a 10-year, we have that clause after five years that we can walk away for whatever reason without any penalties.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. Councilman Chu?
Um, could Director Cody speak to the fact too about, after this 10-year, we actually own our own fiber network within the city?
Yeah, please, sir.
So, if, if we do complete the, the 10 years with the fiber, what'll happen is we can convert to, because right now we're renting or, or leasing. They call it lit fiber. If we do decide to, I'm gonna let Dave, David talk in a second. He raised his hand. Just a second. Um, if we do go to 10-year, we can convert to dark fiber, and that would lower our fees. Of course, they couldn't give me a price because we, we're not, not, we're not there yet. But that would lower our fees to a maintenance cost where the city would own the fiber and they would just do maintenance for us. So, it, it would be less than $4,500 that we pay for service. But I believe David wanted to speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, David.
Okay. I, I just wanted to be clear, Phineas, that as of last week, I requested the termination for convenience clause after five years with 123net. And I'm not certain if what you're saying is that they have since agreed to it. I know I haven't gotten any communication. So, I, I don't know if they communicated with you and the administration that they agreed to it or not. So, I just wanted to be clear that I haven't received communication that they signed off on.
That's correct, but the mayor asked me to speak to that, so I wanted to.
No, right, right. I just thought maybe you were saying that they agreed already. I just wanted to be clear that I hadn't received confirmation yet.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and, and this would be determining, I mean, this would be based off of, again, David, you signing off on it?
Correct.
If the council agrees to move forward. Councilwoman Wiley?
Yes. I am concerned, what is the, uh, the real concern of a 10-year period? Everything gets higher, especially digital. And, uh, post-COVID is going to be even more necessary for us to go to digital meetings, digital, just about everything. If we lock in a price now and, uh, we're able to continue for a 10-year period, it's only gonna get higher, just like five years ago's dollars are nothing compared to today's dollars. So, I'm, I'm just wondering about this 10-year thing. It seems like we'd be locked into a price we could budget for this for the next 10 years without going any further. So.
A great, great point, Councilwoman. That was my, my point as well. But we wanted to have something as it relates to just, um, because council changes over every four years, and we know technology changes, but we know that fiber is probably here for the next at least 15 years. We wanted to be able to at least have a clause in there for us to be able to, to, to walk away without having to pay a, a balloon payment, if you will, at the end to buy the, the, the actual fiber. But I totally agree with you. Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, there is a question that was just, uh, emailed to me specific to this presentation. Would you like for me to read it or wait until public participation?
Oh, you can read it into the record.
Okay. Um, Felicia Studsill says that she is in favor of the service and not a fan of A and T, AT&amp;T, and has this been competitively bid? She also asks, um, is this tied to a specific funding source or general fund dollars? If specific, is there an out if funding dries up? And if we will terminate, are we responsible for, um, un, more un-ormatized costs?
So, you had a few, you had a few questions. So, let's start with the fir, her first question was, is it, was it competitive bidding?
Yeah.
Yeah. Phineas, if you can just speak to that and how we got to this point.
So, um, competitive bidding, well, there, there were quotes that were submitted. We wanted for the speeds and the connections and the network configurations. 123 was, was the lowest with Comcast not having true fiber, but offering what they call coaxial fiber. It is fiber, it's half and half. It's a percentage was through fiber, and then it's a percentage of coaxial that they would run throughout the network. That came in for, uh, five years, $7,000 a month. The speeds that I asked for, I should also suggest what our current carrier of eight, with AT&amp;T, theirs was $17,000 a month.
And if you could too, just before we go to the net, our next question, Phineas, as it relates to the, I know you, you kept alluding to the service being poor in the city, but just overall, just if you could talk to just the connectivity overall. Right now, um, everything is connected for the most part to AT&amp;T one network. And with this particular network, we would be individualized. So, if one goes out, can you kind of speak to that?
Certainly. Right now, we have two connections or two circuits with AT&amp;T. Um, low-end circuits at 10 megabytes per circuit. Um, at our connecting buildings like FIRE, DPS, and Parks and Rec. This is one of the reasons why Parks and Rec has extremely terrible connectivity, uh, internet activity at Parks and Rec. The police department has 50, um, megabytes coming into their building, which they share 25 apiece, um, for court, 25 for police. To make that more relevant, uh, the average cell phone is 18 to 20 megabytes. So, we have a connection, a cell phone connection that's going into our police department, um, where they using body cams and, and a lot of, um, high network bandwidth activities. At City Hall, we have 14 different servers. Um, then we also have the capacity of our staff here, and we only get 100 megabytes of data or, or speed coming into City Hall that constantly drops. Um, we're now putting our phones that is on our network, they're digital. Our faxes are now digital. Um, our servers are virtual. We got physical servers. So, we have even more hardware or, or, um, different devices that we went from using AT&amp;T old 10 megabytes, um, circuitry to 100. And even with them being at 100, we're still having poor connectivity and services being dropped. In fact, our recent election, AT&amp;T, um, services went out, took out City Hall where we had a citizen who couldn't come and, and register for the election. So, the, the network is very unstable, and we have an opportunity to move, move past that 123. Where there is no fail-safe or no primary or secondary, um, current vendor, AT&amp;T. With 123, we actually will have six independent connections. So, for instance, if the primary connection here at City Hall goes down. no one on staff would see it, they, it would ride through the secondary connection called the SD WAN over to the police department, DPS or any other, other five connections on our network and use that connection until the primary connection at City Hall has been restored.
Excellent.
Do the, the mayor, um, just in addition, in speaking with, uh, Mr. Cody, I think he's rectified a lot of problems we've been having with AT and T. They have been charging us, overcharging us, or charging us for things they said we had that didn't. So, um, he has gone through a lot of the, um, the, the current business that we have with AT and T and discovered numerous infractions on their part. And when he challenged them on them, they just said, well, if nobody tells us, we don't do anything about it. And we're not, we don't, I don't think a partnership of that nature is valuable to our city.
Yeah, I totally, I totally agree, actually, um, um, my executive assistant Dennis Black and, 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 and Mr. Cody actually discovered that they were charging us over for, I believe it was forty-seven ports, Mr. Cody, at two hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the last ten plus years.
So, it was about fifty ports, the current system that they, X amount of years ago. And AT and T is, they, they configured the hardware, the city of Inkster did not. They put in, um, a telephone device here, uh, what they call a, a B, I mean, a PBX. And that telephone system will only hold forty-three concurrent calls. Well, they're billing us for ninety-six concurrent calls. And of course, as Councilwoman Watley said, when I challenged, they said, well, no one told us. So, that is true, Mayor, that, that is the dilemma that we're facing with them.
Oh, yeah, no doubt, I'm very familiar, um, and just so the public will know that, uh, Phineas is actually keeping very detailed records along with Dennis Black and they have been in talks with, uh, our attorneys, David Jones, as we look at the next step, um, for AT and T and what we're doing for our service. And let me just say this, um, Phineas, for AT and T as it relates to a rebate, they gave us some type of rebate here recently. How much was that and what was the reason behind that?
So, when I got here, um, a little over two years ago, um, I discovered that we had three networks, um, concurrent with AT and T. Uh, one was a very outdated network, the T, a T one network, um, something that was five to ten megabytes in speed, uh, good enough for, you know, fax machines back in nineteen ninety, ninety, ninety-five, somewhere in there. Um, we also had another network that was never used, that was put in or attempted to be put in, but it was never connected, it was never tested, it was never turned up. And that network had been running for almost four years in billing. And that, we received a rebate for forty-seven thousand dollars, um, to have that network turned off. And I challenged because there was never any documentation of any testing done and a handoff that the city actually acknowledged that these services work and, uh, AT and T agreed that these services were actually working. So, that, we, we gained forty-seven thousand, um, and, and credit and rebates for that network. Um, currently with moving, um, to some newer technology for our phone system, making that digital, we got another rebate of ten thousand dollars to move off our old phone system to a new phone system. But that, that is also with a, a kind of a different carrier, it's called Office Hand. They're, they were bought by AT and T, but still the rebates came as, as newer technology.
Okay, then, and let's just make sure that as it relates to the public comment, um, the, the question about where the money, wh- where is this coming from? Uh, Darren, Darren, are you there?
I am here, yes.
Can you speak to that, if, Felicia, do you need to read, do you need to read back the question there?
Uh, no, I, I think, I, I think I got in, if I, I leave anything unanswered, please let me know, Felicia. But, um, the funding will come out of the general fund, there's no, you know, dedicated funding or any kind of, um, specific, um, funding source from this, it's just coming, coming out of the city's general fund, the general tax dollars, um, that goes to pay for expenses, um, throughout the general fund. So, it would just be, you know, regular, um, budget appropriation each year.
And I think the, the, the other part to our question was what happens if we can't afford to pay the payment?
Right.
Forty-five hundred.
Um, I mean, that's, that's just, uh, you know, overall financial, um, situation. I mean, it's not, it's, it's not like we, you know, it, we wouldn't necessarily be able to pay this forty-five hundred. It's just, we're talking about a, a hypothetical situation where the city's not able to meet its, meet its obligations. This wouldn't, um, be any different than any other obligations that the city would have.
And also too, it, it should be noted that we're paying nine thousand dollars right now and we're looking to go to forty-five hundred dollars. So, that'll be half of what we're typically, what we're paying now and as it relates to the service, correct?
Yes.
So, that would be an additional savings.
Some savings, correct.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Speak, I, I can, who, who's that, Councilman Shaw?
Yes, yes, sir.
Sir.
Now, I, I wanted to know how the transition is going to look if so approved. Do we still have any, um, things that we want to have with, uh, AT and T, any type of, any type of hook with AT and T? If we move on, how does the transition, how would the transition look going from AT and T to one, two, three net? Is there anything that we need to worry about from AT and T, far as anything that we're gonna need to pay them additionally as we move forward?
Yes, just hold, hold that, hold that thought one second, Felicia, did we answer all the questions as it relates to the public comment?
Um, no, she, one last question was if the contract was terminated, um, would we be responsible for, um, and, uh, amorti- unamortized costs?
Phineas, or David, can you answer that question?
If the current proposed clause is approved for the ten year contract, after sixty months, we would not be responsible for the remaining sixty months of the contract. We are, um, within the first year, we would be responsible for, say, the remaining four months at, uh, at, at a, at, at a percent, what, of what that is.
Okay, I hope that answer her, answers her question, okay? And then to Councilman Shaw's question, go ahead and jump in.
To Councilman Shaw's question, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty the same thing. As a standard to have an early termination fee in contracts, uh, of this magnitude, AT and T contract is up next year, um, June. So, our remaining months is, is fifty percent of our remaining months. With many of the bills being corrected, we would have a very small, um, price to pay to, to leave, or, or, or early termination fee. And of course, with so many other things going on and them correcting the bills and trying to keep our service, there may be some leverage for us to leave, probably not, without paying anything. But as it is, as stands current contract with AT and T, fifty percent of the remaining month of the contract. If we move forward one, two, three, it would probably take them ninety to a hundred and twenty days, which would eat up another three to four months and AT and T's remaining twelve months of their contract. So, we'll be looking at seven to eight months, half of what that is.
Hey, so, so, Chair, my question would be, follow up with that, we are in a position to be able to, uh, take care of that, that payment?
Phineas, did you want to answer that question or?
Yeah, please, uh, Councilman Shaw, please, I didn't hear it all.
So, so, so the, the, the follow up question would be, will we be in the position to be able to go ahead on and pay them of that remaining fee?
I would say yes, considering that we paying a nine thousand dollars a month currently.
My last question.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Yes, uh, Sandra Watley here. Another thing that I think we need to take into consideration, if we're paying them nine thousand a month now and we're only gonna be paying forty-five, that forty-five can go towards, the other half of that forty-five is money that could be used. I mean, we will make up that shortfall quicker by only paying the forty-five instead of the nine thousand. So, whatever AT and T's contract calls for, that money can be going towards that, if you all understand what I'm saying. Because half of the money is what we'll be spending, so we can catch up to whatever we owe AT and T in a short amount of time because we're spending less.
Correct, good point. Got a question. Question, Reverend Williams?
Yes, uh, what about all of the money that they, um, that they have shortchanged us, are we going after that money?
Yes. Yes, that they've been billing, that they've been billing us. I mean, even, even now, Phineas, if you can just speak to them understanding what's, what's kind of happening right now and us getting on top of it. Um, they've actually reduced our current monthly, uh, billing to what, or proposing to do?
They're proposing to reduce our current billing, um, to two thousand dollars a month for the remainder of the contract. Pending the shut off of all the fiber, uh, I mean, the old phone lines. We had fax lines for instance, that was billing at the ICE arena. Um, and, and that's been closed for quite a long time. And that was billing at sixty dollars a month, just one fax line there. Um, there were several other fax line identified at a location, I believe, that was abandoned a long time ago from the police department that was billing at seventeen hundred dollars a month.
Hmm.
I had another fax account that was billing at seventeen thousand dollars a month for ten fax lines. So, with turning all of that stuff off and downgrading much of our service, AT and T is saying, hey, can you just, you know, lift us and we'll take your service down to, uh, well, it's twenty-six last week, uh, weekend, I got email notification that they want to take it down to, to two thousand dollars. But half it down to two thousand dollars would only mean that we're stuck with a network that we cannot grow with, that is not going to meet the current demand, um, that we've been put into or facing with the pandemic, where we need more bandwidth and more internet speeds.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Chisholm?
I just wanted to give a statement of support. Um, with regards to everything that, that IT is doing and, and, and the city is doing and what your visions are for the city. When we switch over, or if we switch over to this, this actually enables us to provide wifi for the community. So, in the event, something like this, uh, unfortunate event, which was the pandemic occurred, and we talked about how are our kids gonna get their, um, school lessons from the school and things of that nature and the library being closed, uh, the IT director would be able to install access points around the community tapped into the fiber system that would support Inkster overall. Of course, that's something in the future that we need to be worked out, but it would be a solid and stable connection for individuals who may not have in-home internet as well as with a public safety, uh, capacity. If the cell towers went down and, uh, police cars and fire cars are connected to the cell towers, they'll be connected to our system and still able to operate within the city and communicate with City Hall, dispatch, uh, the police department and never go off. So, in a sense, even if we got cut off from the internet to the outside, where we have our own internal network, we still be able to communicate with one another, one another.
Well said, Councilman, great minds think alike, because that was my, that was my statement as well, so, for, for supporting this, so thank you so much. I mean, too, you know, especially coming from you just being, uh, a, a technology person and actually working in the industry. I know you, you have an intimate knowledge of kind of what's been going on, so thank you for that.
Now, Mr. Chair, I just have one last question.
Councilman Shaw.
On the, on the way that they were billing the city, was there, how, how did you find that out? How did you find that AT and T was billing us for, um, for buildings that wasn't even operating? And if, and how you found that out? I mean, I just want to know, how did you find that out? Was it?
Well, I, I think it's, it's a number, it was a number of things. Um, uh, thank you for, uh, the lead on, uh, Phineas, our director of IT. He had been, um, looking for ways to get new technology into, into the community. And, um, him and Dennis Black, who's my executive assistant, they, they ended up putting their hands together and, and Dennis, they, they looked through the budget and looked through some of the billings and they just started finding stuff and the next thing you know, it just caught fire. So, between, uh, Phineas and Dennis, they've been working and just really just looking at the bill, looking at all of our bills, detailed bills and and that's kind of how it pretty much came.
That should have been, i- if so, that should have been on the check registry, you, for you to be able to see what AT and T is billing, uh, the city of Inkster for, for its, its, its service to the city of Inkster. And also, if.
Yes, sir.
How we are going to look at one, two, three, if so approved, how we're going to look at their billing service? Are we going to, you know, have that figured out on the check registry or how we, how we being billed from there?
Well, I think that's a question for, for Darren, if you can hop in there, because that was kind of a little technical for me. When you, you used, when you, when you talk, when you say that the check registry, what, what are we saying? And Darren, did you understand what his question?
No, I'm, I'm not quite sure what he says on the check registry, I'm not quite sure what, uh, Councilman is, is pointing to.
Okay, now, if, 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 if they have found that they were billing the city of Inkster for other various service that we caught, that wasn't actually for us to be getting those services, where are we looking at? I mean, is it going to be on the check registry because we're paying out those bills to AT and T? Is it going to be just for a whole bill or is it going to be for certain services that AT and T is, is giving the city?
Well, it, it, you know, for the most part, we're making monthly payments. The issue comes that there were a lot of, um, you know, kind of sub accounts that the city had and you can't, um, you know, readily identify exactly what, um, and, and Phineas can kind of speak to it in more detail than I can, but you can't just by looking at the bill, readily identify exactly what a cert- what the service is, where it's located. That was one of the problems with, um, the old setup, you know, this, this, this setup goes back years and even decades. When the city had long distance accounts and, and fax lines and so forth. And so, you know, you can get a bill with, with pages and pages and pages of, of detail and not necessarily know exactly what it is, uh, that's contained within there. But I mean, Phineas has been working for, for months, if not years, to try and get this, uh, thing unraveled. So, you know, when, when it's getting paid from, from a, a check standpoint, we're paying, you know, we're usually paying one large bill with numerous sub accounts, um. You know, I think probably at one point, there were probably what, Phineas, close to fifty to a hundred different sub accounts on there?
Yeah, yeah, to, and to, to speak to that, it, it takes, and it, 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 it takes a reasonable mo- a reasonable amount of network experience and me having almost twenty-seven years' experience in IT, seeing bills that come in with sub accounts and if I can show anyone the, eh, the AT and T bills, you can't readily identify what that service is. But from a network point and being able to dive into our network and our hardware and measure bandwidth, measure, um, packet traces of, of information, how it flows through the network, I was able to identify endpoints that had quote unquote, um, fax lines or, or a long distance service and things not being used or things, uh, just not, just not configured properly in the network. Where I started challenging AT and T and having their engineers show me exactly why this is billing, why the traffic or the bandwidth or the network speed is this or that. And then going back to our contract and seeing what our COSs are or our, our statement of services are supposed to be and measure what we're actually getting and using and not using and things of that nature. So, those discrepancies were revealed from just having the knowledge of how to look at a network and challenge the vendor and say, no, we're not getting this, but you're billing for this.
But also too, Phineas, I think even with, uh, Councilman Shaw's, uh, question too, just so we're all on the same page, I think, uh, Councilwoman Wiley said it earlier, we'll be locked into this price at forty-five hundred dollars a month. Um, and then we, we will from this point forward be work, have a working relationship, not only from the technician, but all the way up to the president of the company to be able to, if we have any discrepancies in, in the billing, to be able to identify that and then get it corrected quick.
Yeah, because we got, we got, we, we really. Yeah, because we got, we got, we we really need to make sure that we can, you know, measure that, watch that so that we won't get into a situation like that again, where we're billing, we we being billed for stuff that, you know, we're not even using.
Yeah, I I think I think the thing is, this will be way more transparent because we're 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 not purchasing so many different um types of services and and all these very frag fragment. I think that was kind of the problem, that this was a very fragmented um, you know, type of uh arrangement that we had. This is going to be a very transparent, you know, we're only paying for one or two or just a handful of services. And we're, we we will know and be able to identify just from looking at the bill, whether or not we're we're getting what we're paying for. Whereas it was just the opposite with the uh with the AT and T structure.
Very good. That's what I was, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
You, you're welcome. And and lastly, Phineas, just to wrap it up, because we had another presentation from from the Treasurer. Um, it it needs to be stated that we will still need hardware, correct?
That is, that is true. That that's another piece that we're we're working on. Uh, there was a a proposal sent, but there were some things that I wanted more of to, I I thought that would give more value uh to Inxter and it just makes sense. Um, I will say that the hardware that is being proposed is the exact hardware that one, two, three uses throughout their network and they're currently using at their HQ or headquarters. And more importantly, it's the same hardware that I myself purchased to hold up AT and T network when it failed several times.
When when do you project that, when do you see that coming before us as it relates to 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 that? And is it part of the 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 new budget? Have you spoken to Darren as of yet on what we need?
Scared to talk to Darren. Um, I have sent emails to Darren. Um, just let him know that that this was coming, this is something I wanted.
Okay, well, let let me, let me say this, Phineas, then, so 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 continue to find us savings as you have done. And you've done a great job at doing that. We really appreciate you bringing this to us. Know that you have our full supporters, we're moving this forward. So hopefully, um, as we get off into our new business council, that we could um move this forward. So, um, if there's not any other questions, let's move right in over into the treasurer.
I uh, I have a question. Yes, uh, this new hardware, will it be coming from one, two, three net or is from, or is this from another vendor?
It would be coming from another vendor. I just wanted to make the point that this is um hardware that is pretty much bona fide to hold up a network that one, two, three net would be offering us.
Okay, and just a question for the Council in general. Uh, this, we've had a lot of this information for about two or three months. Is there any idea when it's going to come for a vote? Because I think this is something we can set ahead, because we do have a lot of uh other things that require our attention, especially now while that we're in this COVID nineteen situation. So do we know when this is coming up for a vote of council?
Yeah, that would be like a general question for Council. I think that would be for for me because I understand that these are my initiatives that I'm putting before you to to vote on. The reason why the the hardware hadn't been before you is because we wanted to at least get the software together first. Um, knowing that we would have the infrastructure just in case we weren't able to afford the hardware and to be able to try to find the money for the hardware, understanding that we're dealing with a two point one million dollar deficit currently that we'll be talking about tonight as we're trying to balance our budget. So based off of what we talk about tonight and then as we go through uh budget talks and and hearings, um, as you weigh in, the the council weigh in, the the general public weighs in, we will have um that cost. I do have that cost, uh, that cost is roughly about fifty five thousand. And we'll be looking at it relate, as it relates to hardware. But we just wanted to make sure to, you know, of course, we're providing essential services first and then looking at everything else that we need to do, understanding that these are essential services. I do totally understand that, especially with the new norm. And right now, of course, we're on virtual, a virtual meeting, so we definitely need to have the right hardware. So um we will be presenting that um as as we come and work through the budget.
So.
That ask you a question, Councilman?
This, just, I just need to know, are we looking at the next council meeting or the council meeting in June? When will we be voting on this particular package presented before the day?
The one to to tonight with the software, we'll be doing that right now.
Okay, great.
We'll be doing that tonight.
Great.
Alrighty. Any other questions? All right, here in the Treasury, Quarantine, jumping right on into the next presentation. And and it's uh about the budget and uh dates for public hearings.
Sure, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so just wanted to let the Council know that the uh Mayor's recommended budget was um emailed out to the uh members of Council. Um, and we uh, you know, as as the Mayor mentioned, we need to start discussing dates. Uh, firstly, we want to just, you know, let let everyone know, you know, we've been been somewhat delayed due to um, one, our inability to get into City Hall on a regular basis. And then um the fact that uh our our advisor, Plant Moran, um, who's normally in the office with us, their their uh firm has has cut out any type of um office visits for for any of their their members um and employees. So uh, you know, we had to to on pretty short notice. And and I want to thank all the department heads and folks in the Mayor's office and and uh Plant Moran and everyone who was very flexible, because, you know, for the first time probably ever, we had to do budget, budget reviews, budget appearance with our department heads uh via conference call and via Zoom. And um, you know, had to to really get creative in terms of how we were able to dig into some of the financial information that we uh normally need in order to put together the budget. So um, you know, coupled with the fact that we were oftentimes on the computers uh remoting and uh networking remotely, and that presented some other challenges. So we 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 had a somewhat challenging process, but again, thanks to everyone's um input and flexibility, we we were able to to get through the um, get through the process and get, you know, get uh through this uh important step. And again, we've submitted the uh Mayor's budget, we'll work with the clerk um to get that online for everyone. I do want to just let the Council know as you go through there, um, you know, from the requested budget that we received from from all of our department heads to what you uh see that that's been submitted by the Mayor, we were challenged with having to essentially bridge an over two million dollar uh funding gap. You know, given the city's uh financial situation and the Mayor's uh commitment to making sure we uh present a balanced budget. Uh, we had to to make some some pretty uh sizable cuts, some pretty difficult cuts. Um, you know, I think just looking at some of the more important things that we did and 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 were submitted uh via the Mayor's budget, we uh had to reduce a number of um the budgeted positions in the Fire Department. We had to look at some of the uh general fund subsidy that was provided to Parks and Rec. We had to either eliminate or delay some capital uh projects that the city needs, but just can't afford at this time. Um, we were unable to fund some uh vehicle requests in the Police Department. And so there there were a number of things uh as we go into more detail uh with the budget. A number of things that, you know, we probably in 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 better times would like, like to have been able to fund, but we simply just don't have the resources. So we had to make some very difficult choices. Um, you know, we understand this is kind of, you know, some of the initial steps and and the overall process and moving towards an approved budget. So we are prepared to discuss in detail some of the the uh things that we looked at and how we reached the decisions um and the advice that was provided to Mayor. Um, you know, in terms of the the various alternatives that were available to the city. Uh, and again, these were were pretty, pretty challenging decisions. But, you know, I think everyone understands the kind of the realities that we're faced um from a financial standpoint. Uh, in addition to that, I I do want to state, you know, we're we're dealing with a a a unique situation um given the pandemic as well as kind of the the ripple effect that it's had on the economy. Um, and we did not at this point fully account for some of the potential impacts that could uh result from the from the COVID nineteen situation. And and what I, when I say that, what I mean, we very well could could see some impacts to our revenues. Uh, we could see some impacts to uh expenses that we may have to incur. But at this point in time, a lot of those things, we're just not able to fully uh, you know, account for those, fully project for those. Um, you know, from a revenue standpoint, the the thing that's most directly uh impacting on the city is the state revenue sharing as it relates to sales tax. We know that the um short-term projections for those are obviously going to be lower than what had initially been um projected. You know, the state is is projecting billions of dollars less in revenue. And there's a chance that some of that could um, you know, some of that shortfall can make its way down to the local level. Um, but again, we just don't, we don't know how 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 that's going to present itself. And so we, at this point, don't recommend trying to to capture all of that and try and um, you know, make financial uh accommodations for that because we just don't have enough information. Uh, you know, some of those those risks are are balanced out by legislation at the federal level. There was um, and one of the earlier uh responses at the federal level, there was some funding that's been provided to the state. Um, we're waiting to see exactly how the state uh, you know, puts though, put that money, puts uh decides, how they decide to put that money out and how much of that's going to be put to the local level. And within the past week, there was a new legislation that was passed by the House that um still has to go through the Senate and 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 be signed by the President. Um, but that's another potential uh source of funding that could offset some of the revenue loss and some of the increased cost. Um, so, you know, again, there there there's some things that we're, we know we're going to have to take a look at, whether it's um, you know, a matter of weeks or months, um, you know, in terms of the overall impact of what's going on, not only specifically with the um, with the the situation with the with the COVID nineteen, but kind of the larger economic impact, you know, unemployment is up. Um, what's that going to mean for for tax collections, water bills? You know, a lot of these things are just really starting to to hit. We don't have an ability at this point to to really come up with any meaningful projection. So a lot of those things, again, are not baked into this budget. Um, we did try and 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 weigh those things as best as possible, but we know that there's going to need to be some further discussions and and potential updates as as the situation continues to unfold. Um, so, you know, the information is out there for you guys. Uh, you know, this evening, we would certainly like to discuss uh setting up the 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 uh budget review, the study sessions for Council, um, so we can go and and um meet and begin the process of going through the detailed uh budget and line items contained in there and working towards getting an approved budget.
Treasurer, do you have any suggestions on dates for us?
Um, I'm certainly leaving that up to Council. Um, you know, we're we're ready and prepared. I don't know how long um Council wants to to digest before we digest the budget and read it and and um go over before we set the first meeting. But we're we're ready as soon as a a Council uh feels that they're ready to to go ahead and start setting the meeting. So um, you know, obviously, we're going to need need to do that electronically and get the proper notice up. Um, but we're we're ready from an administrative standpoint, as as, you know, whenever it's uh suitable for Council.
And my main thing is just to make sure that the Council has enough time to look at the budget and they feel comfortable. And then, of course, you know, to be able to ask any questions and as we go through this, know that we're going through this together because of where we started from. So um, just saying that, is it any dates that you guys are going to throw out there or should we get back with you with dates?
Um, Mr. Mayor. Um, the package, when will we be getting the financial package?
Uh, the the fi, the package was emailed out this evening and I'm going to work. Um, you know, normally we try and provide hard copies, but because of um the printer that we normally use is not uh available and and we just don't have an op ability to to get uh hard copies. Electronic copies have have already been sent around, sent those out uh right before to this evening's meeting. And we're looking to uh have some physical copies printed and available later this week for people. It won't necessarily be in the binded um package that that we normally present. We'll probably look to get that available in a couple of weeks, but uh the the electronic copies have been been sent around.
Okay, well, that's no problem. I can get there long, long as it's already been sent. You know, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Any, any, any dates from Council?
Um, okay. Yes, before we get started with date, um, I would like to inquire as to when the building is going to be sanitized. If we're supposed to be meeting there or are we meeting somewhere else? Because I think in the uh, the, one of the things I mentioned when I sent out a, you know, open door policy was that it needed to be disinfected, disinfected, not just cleaned, sanitized and disinfected. And I might suggest to you that you go through housing, because they had their um building sanitized. And I don't know what kind of price they got or anything like that. But my concern is the safety and the health of the people working there. Now, I wa, I I was offered to go up there tonight and do some things, but I'm just not comfortable yet. Because one of the things they haven't told us is exactly how you get there. So we need to take every precaution to make sure that we're in line with the current protocols that the state is offering. So I would suggest we set a date for that prior to setting a date for this.
I was thinking that we were doing, and let me just make sure that I'm clear with you. I was thinking that we were going to do um, just because of the timeline, that we were going to do virtual public hearings. If that's not what, if that's not what you guys want to do now. And to understand, let me say this, that the 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 City Hall has been sanitized once already. At at the, at at, in the, at the end of March, it was actually sanitized. Uh, Jerome Bivens, our DPS Director, actually led to charge with that. And that we're actually looking to open up the City Hall on June the first um to essential uh essential employees only, understanding that the Governor has lifted in 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 her executive order um permitting for uh folks to do construction and um and they they need to get into the office to be able to to get permits and to see the clerk for the elections and then also to pay water bills. So um, we will have the building sanitized again and then have all the social distancing um requirements set forth um for, not only for you all to see, but of course, for the general public to see as well. But I didn't think that we were going to be meeting um physically for the, physically for this, for this particular um meeting. I thought it would be, it would be more virtual. Correct me if I'm wrong, Darren.
Yeah, that that was my expectation as well, I'm there.
If you guys want to do something different.
I, no one told us, so you have.
That's what we're talking, that's what we're talking about tonight, man.
I was, I was under the impression we were past practice. So if we're doing that virtual, you don't have to clean nothing, I'm cool.
Oh, we're we're, know that we are cleaning, we 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 are cleaning. But but at the same time, I totally agree with what you're saying, though, so. I'm sorry, sir.
I I didn't mean to interrupt, but but first of all, uh, what I understand that 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 whole building, we've been sanitizing it for the longest, even the recreation complex and very well, the the people did a wonderful job in there. So, you know, so I'm just trying to figure out, oh, what is she talking about? Um, sanitizing the buildings and we've been doing it all the time. Because we're the one, and I think that's the one that housing is using, the one that we we started off with the mayor at at the City Hall.
Yeah, I did, I did recommend to them.
I'm sorry, I guess that's part of the transparency we're talking about, because no one's mentioned that to me. And I don't know what they've mentioned to the others, so I'm inquiring. That's what we're talking about.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Chair?
Ma'am. Howard.
I'm sorry, Mr. Uh, uh, Mr. Williams, will you finish? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, uh, Mayor Proton.
Um, as far as our meeting goes with it, uh, I know sometimes we used to do it like on Saturdays, um, Fridays, however, I don't know how efficient, after everyone's working and then get on a Zoom call. I don't know how people feel, uh, because I don't know, Mr. Chisholm uh gets off of work. We all can be at six o'clock, but you, I don't know, we need to just set a date. So I I guess I'm open for any date.
Yeah, I I I actually agree with you that Saturday is better because, you know, we work on the state, in the state. So I usually get off around like five or six o'clock. And like you said, just getting off and coming to a Zoom call, you want to be able to go over the budget.
Yeah, okay.
I totally agree. And if Councilwoman Howard, if you could just speak to that. So basically, on a Saturday, would you guys take what, four, four hours and blocks or eight hour blocks? How would you do it?
Um, you know, it only depends, because a lot of times it was just sitting around due to everyone's ability to make it. Um, you know, it only depends because a lot of times it was just sitting around due to everyone's ability to make it. But I think, you know, uh, we should do it on a Saturday. I think that's, everybody is fresh. You know, get up, I don't know what time, twelve o'clock or whatever, and then we start two or three hours and then we done. There would be one session. I mean, I'm not sure. It's up to everybody else.
What's your pleasure? Are you guys thinking, uh, starting this Saturday, next Saturday? What are you thinking?
Um, what I'm thinking, Mr. Chair, is that we should be able to get back with, uh, you know, as we can digest this, you know, and really look at our calendars and get with Felicia and make sure we can send those messages out to her. And, you know, see, you know, exactly what dates we, we definitely want to have. Us just trying to chime in right now, I mean, you know, we're just thinking off the fly. So if you can really sit back and digest and see what dates that we're looking at, you know, let's, let's, let's move it through the city clerk. That's just my thing.
Okay, here not, here not, and any other opinions? I think that, that makes sense. So I, I thought, I'm hearing that Saturday works. And then we'll look at some future dates here soon. So we'll get with the city clerk, Darren.
Yeah, and, and, and I just wanted to, you know, certainly, um, we don't have to attempt, uh, to try and, and do everything in one session. I think that, you know, there's a pretty large amount of information that we have to, um, cover. And I, you know, I know in the past years, it's been a challenge to try and cover a, a lot of this in one session. So we're certainly, um, willing to do it over multiple sessions. And if, if, uh, you know, if we need to do meetings, um, to accommodate various schedules, um, we certainly can, can do that, you know, to, to put together a, um, you know, something that works for, for everyone.
Okay, that'll work.
Alright, good. Any other questions as it relates to? Alright, moving right along. We have no public hearing, uh, consent agre- agenda?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Councilman Shaw moved. Or by Councilman Williams. All in favor? Uh, roll call please.
Councilwoman Washington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Howard?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wiley.
We have six years here.
Yeah, he's having motion carries. Boards and commissions? Going around? Do you want to want to jump in? Any, uh, any boards and commissions appointments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I was inquiring about the, um, I see we have a, uh, community development block grant advisory council. And both the tenured persons are former councilperson. I'm not sure, but I would be interested in just finding out, you know, exactly how we go about making recommendations and how we go about dispersing those funds. So I would like to add my name to that if we are still, um, having that type of, uh, commission, if that commission is still in.
For, 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 uh, cl- uh, clerk, can you answer that question? So you turn to answer that question, but, uh, if it, if it's not a, if it's not a commission, let's get it back in commission. Let's get you on that. I think any, uh, uh, more eyes, the better. So. What, what's your thoughts, city clerk?
Um, I, I don't recall if that is, I'm, I'm not for sure if that is still a commission. I need to look at that.
Okay, we know that we, uh, Councilwoman Wiley wants to be a part of that, so let's get that information.
Just, uh, consideration, my name consideration, if we are developing something of that nature. Because we need people to, um, be on the community development block grant. And I believe with Darday Fleming, the economic director, because she does a lot of that, maybe we can get some additional, whatever.
I like that. I like that.
Okay.
Alright guys, anybody else? Let me just say that as it relates to the boards and commissions, uh, uh, president of the planning commission, Steve Chisholm, do you, are you thinking that we can do any planning commissions meeting soon, virtual? Or what are you thinking?
So we had, I had did bring that up to the city planner with regards to just some of the things that we have in the pipeline and asking what all would it really take? I know some of the site plan reviews are quite large. Not sure how that would actually come across on the screen, but based off of tonight's success of the meeting, we were going to go from there. So I, we are looking forward to doing that because I did have some commissioners concerned about once everything opened back up, would they still be able to participate remotely because they weren't comfortable coming out to a public set? So that's something additional we need to look at as well.
I totally agree. Okay. Right, guys, moving right along. Thank you. Previous business? City clerk?
Yes, um, Allen Brothers and Attorneys P L L C invoice for twenty-seven thousand, three forty, point nine eight that had already been paid. It was on the last council meeting and there was not any discussion on it, so it was brought back for previous business.
So, uh, could I just jump in here just for a second? Since I made that motion that we look at that, is it possible? I could rescind that at this time because I've understood what happened. So there's really no need to discuss it anymore unless the council wants to do that.
What's your pledge, council?
I support her move of rescinding it.
And just so we, is that the protocol, is that protocol, city clerk, for us to do it that way?
They really, I mean, you, it was up for discussion anyway, so you didn't even have to really place a vote on it. It was just merely for a discussion purposes.
Alright, perfect. Thank you.
But you need a, um, do you need a, a vote?
No vote necessary. We're just here for just discussion. Understanding what had happened with that. Okay. And I think just for clarification, Darren, if you could just jump in there just real quick, this is a relates to just clarification, the reason why I, I think that it even came up because it was already paid.
Yeah, so, um, this, you know, this invoice came in shortly after the, um, you know, after the city hall shut down. Um, and it was, you know, an item that generally is, 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 uh, not paid until it, it, it's, uh, placed before council on the consent agenda. And, um, you know, really just kind of in an effort for us to make, kind of keep, uh, keep up on our, our, our bills. We, you know, we didn't pay that separately. It was just a part of the, the, you know, kind of the normal, um, procedures and, and I didn't, um, you know, adequately. I, I had the invoice processed and the check cut, um, and I just didn't adequately pause and get, make sure that there was the, uh, necessary approvals from, from council. Um, didn't get any, um, you know, sign off or, or the like. So it wasn't, wasn't any, anything that was, was done with any kind of specific purpose outside of us just processing the invoices and, um, you know, this is the first time where we've had a situation where council went, you know, a month or so without meeting. And normally these, these, um, the invoice gets processed or an invoice gets, gets dealt with by council within a matter of, of a week or so after it's sent. And this one had been, um, you know, had been in the office and we were just, just processing invoices and, uh, the check got cut, uh, through that. You know, through that, that thing.
Thank you, thank you, Darren. I really appreciate that.
On, on that, just a question on that. Now, what, when something like this happens, is there, is, can there be? I know we talked about, you know, the transparency. Is there any way that council can be abreast on something like this that happens through the clerk? I mean, not to the clerk, but through, uh, Felicia, I mean, you know, so that we can make sure that we get this information.
Yeah, I think, I think Councilman Shaw, Councilman Shaw, I'm sorry, did, were you finished with your question or statement?
No, uh, so that we will be able to identify and know that these things have transpired. So that we won't be, some say we, we are left in the dark, so to speak. So we want this to be very transparent so everybody would know that's on council, that these bills are being paid that should be going through council.
Yeah, I think again, I think Darren actually e- explained it very well. Um, he, he again, because we were out for a month and understanding that the emergency, um, executive order had just happened. Um, this is just something that normally is put onto the consent a- agenda. This is not normally discussed. This is something that just paid per the contract that was, uh, actually in the budget for, for, for attorney fees. And it was something that he had just paid, so we wouldn't get behind as it relates to our attorney services. So this is, isn't that something that i- is like, that, that was in the dark? It's something that this typically happens each council meeting. It's part of our consent agenda. Um, like, the, on the consent agenda today, we have an invoice for Allen Brothers that we didn't necessarily discuss because you all take a look at it before. If you have any questions, you, you submit those questions to the attorney and, and to myself or the treasurer.
Exactly, I understand that, I understand that.
Yeah, so this is.
That's some email or a text message that, you know, the attorney.
I just think it was an oversight. Let me say this. I don't want to drag my man through, through. I think the treasurer's been doing a phenomenal job. And let me say that right off publicly. I really appreciate the work that he's been doing and, and really just trying to keep us all together. I just think that it was, again, he was doing, just doing the job and going about it and paid the bill, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with that. I have no problem with that, you know? The bill needed to be paid. I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So this was something, there's not, there's not a process. We already have a process in place. All the bills come before the council.
Mayor note, um, so, you know, I think really the, the, the issue is, you know, this is the only bill that requires some type of council, um, action. Um, so like, like the bill that, that, the, the following bill, um, you know, I wait until the council acts on it before I pay it. So, you know, you guys receive the bill. Um, I think you get the bill from the clerk. Um, so you receive the bill. You, you vote on it or pass it via the consent agenda. And then once that's done, uh, it's, it's paid. So, you know, this is really kind of a one-off situation where, you know, every other bill that we get, we pay them without any kind of, um, approval needed from council because it's already been done via the budget process. So, um, going forward, like this one, I, I, I'll just make sure we, we don't pay it, um, until council has had a chance to act on it to ensure the transparency that I think Councilman Shaw is referencing.
Yeah, just to, so we notify, you know, I mean, that's, you know, I know this is something unprecedented, you know? And that's why we gave the executive order to the mayor to be able to handle certain things. So, you know, we just want to be, um, you know, brought up to speed concerning something like this. I mean, I'm sure we probably won't have to go through this. I'm hoping that we don't have to go through this again, uh, at this magnitude, but, you know, just so that we will be able to be informed. That's all I have. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
I, I think, uh.
Is he frozen?
I believe so.
Well, um, I don't know how we go about doing this, but this might be part of that, uh, that weekly update we asked for, I asked for, uh, a few months ago. Just little things like that in it that might help with Councilman Shaw's, uh, suggestion.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think from, from, from my standpoint, um, you know, one, it's, it's, you know, I think we, we very, you know, this, very rarely does council go that length of time without meeting. Um, we have the virtual meetings now and it's just a matter of if, if I have an invoice, and this is really the only invoice that requires councils, um, uh, you know, to, to specifically pass or approve, um, I just wait until you guys do that.
It's okay. Feel the void.
Yeah, well, hopefully, hopefully there won't be a void. Because I mean, like this one, you guys, you guys have dealt with it, um, you know, going forward, we're just, just waiting. If, if, if we have a situation where council is not, not meeting, um, you guys gave the mayor the, the ability so I can, you know, can seek and get the mayor's specific approval. Uh, but it's, it's, it's only one invoice, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a problem. One point, you know, we, we can handle it, you know, whether it's through council or through the mayor. I, I don't think it's, it's, uh, it should be an issue for us going forward.
I don't think so either. I only agree.
Okay, so, so do we, do we get the mayor back or?
He's not back yet.
Okay, can I say?
I, I want to make a statement when the mayor come back, um, I think it, it need to be said. So I'll wait till he come back on the line then. But, uh, yeah, just go ahead on with the agenda.
Okay, I'd like to have a, a word. Uh, as far as, uh, transparency, I think we get the, uh, monthly reports. And, and I don't know, I'm not sure when the last one we got, but I know Darren used to give it to us on a monthly basis. But is there any, I'm not sure, I'm talking to, uh, administration. Is it any contracts that is about to expire? Uh, I know a lot, a lot of people has been working on the budget, so I'm not sure what did or didn't fall through the cracks. But if we can look into that, Felicia or in administration, just find out if it's any contracts that's about to expire. And just let us know. Because I know we do, we did have an email on that, a spreadsheet on that, but I haven't looked, I have to go back and find it. So Felicia, I guess that's a question for you. I'm not sure.
Um, you get a, you should be getting through the mayor's report, um, the contracts. You get an, an expired, um, you get the list of contracts, so you're able to look yourself and see what has.
I know we got one, but I didn't know if we got it every month, every, every, every month.
You're supposed to get it every month?
Okay.
Yep, it's supposed to come out every month. And it's, it's pretty much, pretty up to date.
Okay.
Um, because I don't, there's, there's, we haven't really been doing too much business within these past couple of months. So it's, it's pretty much up to date.
Okay. So do we go on with the agenda or we wait for the mayor? I'm not sure what's going on.
Um, I'm just trying to call him and I can't even, I can't reach him on, even on his cell phone.
I was waiting to see if City Ingsor or Troy could chime in and let us know.
Yeah.
Because they're both in city, I believe, I know City Ingsor is in city hall.
Okay.
Troy? Phineas?
Troy just unmuted himself. Phineas is under the City Ingsor account. Just wait and see.
Do you guys hear?
Yeah.
Yes. He got, um, detached from the meeting, so getting him back on, you guys can continue with the meeting. He'll be on momentarily.
Uh, Councilwoman Howard?
Okay.
That's you.
Okay, what's the next item on the agenda?
Um, the next item on the agenda is, um, the new business.
Uh, okay.
So the new business is consideration and approval of the one, two, three net fiber internet proposal. And, um, I don't have whether it's for five or 10 years. Phineas, um, did you want me to, should that be inserted in there, 10 years?
Can we vote on, or move this and go into discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, what's your question? It's been on, it's been on, moved on, it's on the floor, so now we're in the discussion. So.
Who, who, who moved and who seconded? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Didn't get any of that because you were still talking about the 10 to five and 10 years.
Okay, yeah.
Do the five years or do we need to include the 10 years? So I guess the motion, it hasn't, it hasn't been moved or supported. So you read it. So now we have to move and support and then we have discussion after that. So someone has to make a, um, um, a motion to support it.
I'd like to make a motion that we go with the 10 years because it's more feasible for the city. With one, two, or three.
I second.
Okay, it's been, uh, it's been supported and it's been seconded. And then, any discussion now? It's up for discussion now.
Yes, Madam Chair. I was wondering, uh, specifically with regards to us voting on this. I guess the city attorney would have to chime in. My question was how do we actually vote on this? If the contract language isn't ready to move forward yet because there, uh, Allen Brothers is still waiting on a response back from their attorneys to see whether or not we agree on it.
Well, we're gonna, we can, we can add that part to it, you know?
Well, uh, we want to, if Attorney Jones, he can chime in on this.
Let us see if, where did?
Did he get locked off too?
I just let the mayor back in. I'm looking for Attorney Jones. I thought.
I see him. I see him.
Okay, let me unmute Attorney Jones.
Okay, I'm here.
Um, yeah.
Attorney Jones?
Yes, Council, Councilman Williams has moved for a 10-year contract. Our proposal as it stands, our last proposal as it stands to one, two, three net was for a 10-year deal. We were just asking after the first five years that the city had the right to cancel the contract for its convenience, which is the standard language that we use in most contracts. So essentially, if it's the will of the body that we have a 10-year deal, we can pass the motion subject to the city attorney's review on the contract language.
That's what I was just getting ready to add, add that part. So, that's what I like to do, Madam Clerk, I, I'll add that part.
Okay.
And then the attorney's, uh, approval.
Got it.
Okay, so any other discussion?
Nope, I'm good with that.
Good with that? Okay, so it's been, uh, moved and supported, so I'll support it. All those in favor say with the exception, uh, with the add-ons that, uh, Councilman Williams wanted through our attorneys.
Aye.
Okay.
Yes, yep.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It, it should be a roll call vote.
No, roll call.
Roll call.
Uh, Councilwoman Howard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wiley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
We have six ayes.
All right, moving to the next item. Do we have any other items? Because my, I'm not looking at my sheet, so.
No, we, no, we don't have any other items.
Madam Howard, thank you so much for, for, for jumping right in there. We had some technical difficulties on my end, like we had to update Zoom in the middle of-
Thank you, I'm glad you're back.
Yeah, thank you so much for continuing on. All right, good.
Public participation now.
All right, perfect. So this brings us to our agenda as it relates to public participation. What we will do, um, just so we're all on the same page and that we're moving forward, it's one minute. Um, you'll be, we're going to read all of the ones that we received, um, all of the comments that we received into the record. The clerk will do that, and then... All right. Am I still there?
Yeah, he's still here. They just went to bridge here, and that's all, he put the agenda up.
Thank you.
All right. All right, perfect. Thank you, Steve. Um, as it relates to public participation, and then what we're going to do is, then from there, after the clerk reads those into the record, from there, we'll, uh, go to the public, and anyone that has a comment will raise their hand, and it'll be identified by our, uh, my, uh, Chisom, our council, councilperson, uh, Chisom, you recognize those people, let them speak for a minute, and then we'll, we'll get back with them in writing, and we'll put all of our responses up on our website. So the, all the responses to whatever we need to do, and as it relates to those that we need to possibly, we can, um, email them back directly, or put all those responses, we'll put those responses up on our website. Um, yeah, I know we got the agenda, but I still want to get some video, I can't see, uh-
You can go to view options and hit exit screen, um, exit full screen.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve.
No problem.
Yeah, that's what we got, we got on here. Love it. All right, perfect, thank you. Go ahead, Felicia.
Um, the first person that we have for public comment is from Michelle Fussymore, and she states that I am selling a residential property and want to know how I can get the building inspection done in time for the closing on June 15th. I already have the form.
Perfect, and then just for the record, so we're all on the same page, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that we need to read their addresses into the record as well.
Her, um, her email address?
Oh, that's fine. Well, not necessarily email address, but I'm just making sure, do they have a, do they have a, that they do, um,
No, no.
All right, just her names, okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Moving right along.
The next, um, public participation that I have is from Yvette Brock, and she states, is Mr. Black an employee of the city? Is he being paid with city taxpayer funds? If he is a vendor, does he have a contract, and what are the terms of said contract? Her further question is, is Jennifer still working for the city? If so, in what capacity? Is this position temporary or permanent? How is it funded? And that is the second public comment. That is all that I have that was emailed to me.
All right, perfect then. Stephen, you had, you see something in public participation, you're on mute, Steve, by the way.
Steve is, you're on mute.
Steve, you're on mute.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was looking at something in the waiting room, I just had a concern, that's all. Uh, we have, uh, Ms. Courtesy Barr, she just raised her hand, so I'm going to unmute her at this time.
Wait until after public participation.
No, you go right now, one minute.
Okay, census is on fire. Inkster will match, within the next week, we should match the 2010 participation rate. We are at 57.1. Our highest census tract is my tract, of course, along with Hardy Robb, a few others. Um, our tract is at 65%.
Wow.
Public housing is doing very well. They've done their work, and they're working very well. They're at about 55%. We have one census tract that is 10% lower than any other part of the city. And that census tract is 5708, which runs between Harrison and Inkster Road, uh, Carlisle, um, I believe over to Beach, possibly not as far as, um, not as far as Denby, but there's a, a, a really dead zone, because they're running 10% lower than the rest of the city. We're working feverishly to bring that track, and, well, actually, in order to bring the whole city up to where we need to be. Um, we will match the 61%, but I think it's important for council, and, well, the mayor understands, but it's important for everyone to understand that we're, it looks good on paper, 57.1. However, we have to remember that 61% was our ending number, but that was with a 39% deficit. Inkster needs 100% to thrive. We need, no matter what the numbers look like, we're matching, you know, we're matching in another week or so, the 2010, and we still have five months. We've been extended until October, but we still have to work feverishly. Uh, several of the committee members have chosen partners to work with. I have chosen Kim Howard, Ruth Williams has chosen George Williams, um, uh, Pastor Gene has chosen Bernard Shaw, uh, James Eberhard has chosen both, um, Regina Washington and Stephen Chisholm. And again, the, the committee members are working very, very hard. They're putting together programs that we have yet to present, but we're feverishly trying to put together a budget and dates. Because of the pandemic, we have had to back everything up, change from physical activities to go to cyber space. So Hardy Robb is working very hard on his virtual part, so is James Eberhard, and he's bringing, they're, they're dragging me along. We're all working together. Everybody is doing their part, and we should be very proud of the committee that we have put together. We have several organizations that were not on board.
Ms. Barr, Ms. Barr, thank you so very much for that update, and just for the sake of time as it relates to just public participation. Um, we're definitely going to continue on to put that information out through all of our social media outlets and also to our website. So, um, you've been in contact with all of us, so we really appreciate your work. Um, we have the next participant, please?
At this time, we don't have any further hands raised. Um, oh, here we go, Octavia Smith.
Perfect, Octavia Smith?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I miss you guys. Um, just two quick announcements. Um, just to let you know, the Inkster Chamber of Commerce, we do have white essential ribbons available for anyone. We mainly was doing it for the businesses, but, um, we actually, if you would like to come and get one from Applewood, support Applewood, and pick up a white ribbon to put in your window, please feel free to do so. Um, also at Western Wayne Family Health Center, we are doing drive-through COVID testing. It's from nine to fi- nine to four, Monday through Friday. You do have to call 313-561-5100, and make a telehealth appointment, and then you can drive through. They will give you a scheduled time, so I just wanted to share that information. Thank you guys so much. Take care.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Oh, that's okay, I, I'll wait till you come around to counsel.
Yeah, that's where you come. Stephen, do we have anything else? Councilman Chisholm, I'm sorry, do we have anything else?
I don't see anyone else with their hands raised, and I don't know if the Madam Clerk has anything else that came via email.
Nope, I don't, I don't, thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Steve, for taking responsibility of that and, and leading that. As it relates to public participation, we're still asking that if you guys have any public participation that you email your questions in, and we will get back with you in writing, and we will post those in, um, all of our public sectors for you, for everyone to see what the response was and the comments were, that the comments were made. So thank you very much for that, that part of, uh, uh, agenda. Uh, City Clerk?
Well, I just wanted to let, uh, Mayor and Council know that, um, the clerk's office will be sending out a letter, um, within the next couple of weeks to every registered voter, um, in the city of Inkster, encouraging them to vote absentee due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, so we're encouraging people to get onto the permanent, um, AV list, and so that they will be able to be mailed out a ballot. Um, so I went into the office today and, uh, got that letter and everything together. So every registered voter, um, who is not on the permanent list will be getting a letter to, um, to participate and get on the permanent list and, uh, vote by absentee ballot.
Um. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I, uh, for clarification?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, uh, is that legal?
Yes.
You checked into that, right?
Yes, it's on the Secretary of State website now, it's legal. It's due to the, um, executive orders that we can be, we can do this, that we can have people, um, encourage them to vote on the permanent, um, list, to be included on the permanent list. We even have a link on our website that takes a person directly to the Secretary of State. Um, they're, they're pushing big for people to be on the permanent AV list.
And let me just make sure that, that, that it's, it's clear, before COVID, they were starting to do that. Um, yeah, so, so, yeah. And thank you, Clerk, for the work that you're doing. Moving right along. Did you have anything else, Clerk?
Um, no, sir, thank you.
You're welcome. Treasurer? We can see you waving, I don't know if we hear you.
I'm unmuting him right now.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Um, I was going to have to do sign language there for a second.
You may have to have a person do it, though, seriously.
Um, so, just wanted to update the council, you know, because of the, um, shutdown, we've been, uh, unable to accept payments in City Hall, uh, primarily for the, um, water bills. Uh, and as a result of that, we've, um, you know, people have been, uh, mailing payments in or dropping them off into cities drop box. So we've been continuing to, uh, process payments, but because of, um, people can't come in and pay in person and can't take cash, um, we, we haven't assessed any, um, late fees. So we've been continuing with our regular billing process. Um, been a little bit delayed because of the, um, the mail, and we're having to process the bills, uh, remotely for the most part. Um, but we, we, we've been able to keep up and maintain, but, um, some folks may, uh, see the payments or not have, their payments may not have posted, or, um, you know, if, if there's any kind of questions or concerns, just need to understand that, you know, things are moving a little bit slower than normal, um, and we expect to, uh, again, this month, uh, we, well, we, we have again this month waived the late fees, since, since no one will be able to come in and pay the bills that are going out for the month of May. So, um, we're trying to, you know, make amends or make some accommodations for the, you know, the situation and, and, um, you know, make sure the customers get every opportunity to, to make payments as, uh, as they may, may want to.
Can this be treated?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, just want to say, in reference to those bills, I'm getting calls from constituents about the bill. I think I emailed you about one the other day.
Yes.
And, uh, but here's another thing that's happening, even though people are mailing their bills, and even though you're not charging late fees, when they get that second bill, it has a past due amount on it. So, what they need to do, should they just pay the current? Because we all know how hard it is to get your money back once you've given it to people, okay?
Yeah, and I know I've had, I had a couple of calls, uh, like last week, um, and so, you know, if they know that they pay, paid, uh, they sent in a check, it may not have just been, been applied before we did the, closed out the billing. So if they know that they sent that bill in, they can just pay the, um, you know, the, the next amount. Um, and they could also look it up online and see, uh, you know, what, what their outstanding balance is, because sometimes those payments will show up online. Um, you know, if, if we got the payment after, we applied the payment after the bill went out. So they can either look it up online, or if they, if they know that they sent a, a payment in, then just pay the, the, the most recent amount that's outstanding. Um, you know, because again, there's no late fees, so if there's any question, I, I don't, um, you know, don't want anybody to, to be overpaying just because they don't see that payment on their most recent bill.
All right, thank you.
All right. Treasurer, anything else?
Uh, that's it, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mayor and Council Communications, uh, Councilman Williams, you want to start us off?
Sure. Yeah, uh, Darren, I have a serious problem on the, um, and I know that this, this virus, this COVID virus has been kicked in, and it, it puts a lot of things behind, okay, but I, I've been trying to get, um, and, but I, I think, uh, Brother Bivins is on the line. I've been trying to get, um, this water bill straightened out, okay? And as of Friday, I got, I think it was, uh, Friday, I got a water bill, it, it tripled. Okay? And so, the question is, um, I, I need to get this bill straightened out, okay? And question is, how can I contact? I know I went through Bivins, and he's supposed to got with the lady on the water thing. And I, I need to get this taken care of, because this, every time I look around, when the bills come out, it's study, um...
Oh my God, what are you, a Disney character?
You can't hear me, or what?
I, I was just asking for, for Stephen to, uh, unmute me. I'm, I'm with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and I got the bill, uh, Friday, I, I was kind of a little upset about it, but I'm not going to let anything upset me, okay? Uh, because I know we don't use but one unit of water probably out of a whole month, but yet still to get, get a girl just five, $500 something dollar water bill, you know, I know, I know it's not ridiculous. I went down, I took a picture on the meters, gave it to, uh, Brother Bivins to take care of it, okay? But when I got this bill today, and, and I've been working on this about two weeks now, okay? So I think it need to be taken care of, okay, I'm not going to get, get out of proportion with it, but I, I, I think somehow with all these estimated bills going out, we need to do something about, we need to talk about it.
Yeah, and, 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 um, we certainly are, I know, in, in, uh, your particular situation, uh, Councilman Williams, we, I know, um, Mr. Bivins and, and, um, June LeBret from, from the treasurer's office is, is working on that. Uh, I don't have the details, let me get an update, uh, in the morning, just to kind of see exactly where that particular situation is. But, you know, the estimated bills that you mentioned, um, it's certainly a, a situation that we've been working on. We're somewhat hampered, um, because in many of those cases, we need to go in and either reboot, uh, the unit, um, because we get, you know, we get the wireless signals back, uh, from a billing standpoint, so we either need to reboot, or sometimes we have to replace the meters, and given, you know, given the situation, we just haven't been able to, um, to do that. So even, even when it's brought to our attention, um, we're not in a position right now, um, to go in and do a in-home visit that we need to do to, to rectify that, um, you know, and, you know, that's just kind of a, a limitation that we're currently dealing with. Uh, but I'll, I'll make sure that we, um, you know, I'll find out, uh, in the morning exactly where, where your account, uh, stands and what's going to be done, and, and I'll, I'll make sure we follow with you about that tomorrow.
All right, I'm still going to have a little patience.
Okay, I appreciate that. And you, and feel free to pray the bill and, and the ma- Okay, I appreciate that. And you, and feel free to pray the bill in, in the meantime.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, no.
Okay.
That ain't gonna happen.
Councilman Chisholm, you have anything for us?
Uh, two things. Dirk, I know we're not in public participation anymore, but I just wanted to say for the record, and maybe the gentleman can reach out to the Clerk's office for a question he had. Anthony Gambles, he had raised his hand, but we were already into, uh, council communication.
Okay, and I do know Anthony. I'll call him directly.
Okay, and then the second thing, I had watched the, uh, Governor's address a portion of earlier today, and she spoke in the first fifteen to thirty seconds of her address about businesses reopening and submitting their plans to the state for approval and review by June first. So I was just wondering if that was something that the city extra had done already, or if that's something that we working on.
Yeah, we are working on that currently. We're, we're actually in contact with the Governor's office as it relates to us opening on June, uh, June the first. And, um, we do have an emergency, um, response plan that we will be forwarding to you all tomorrow. Um, we just put it, uh, putting the finishing touches on it. Um, and then, of course, we'll be sending it over to the state because we would like to open on June the first for just those, again, like I said, those essential services, to be able to collect, uh, the water bills, uh, physically. And then, of course, the Clerk's office doing her due diligence and what she needs to do, and then Building Department as well. So we are working on that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, Councilman Shaw?
Uh, I have nothing at this time.
Councilwoman Wiley?
Uh, yes, sir. I have, uh, two things.
Ma'am?
First is, uh, this Wednesday, I'd like to remind all the council people that we're having a webinar with C Click Fix, and that's at one o'clock, uh, Wednesday, uh, Zoom conference with our special rep from C Click Fix. There are quite a few things entailed in that that I think we can use to better communicate with the residents. And, uh, Ms. Barr was mentioning the twenty-twenty census. They have ways that you can do blast calls to people who have telephones. And everybody's got a telephone now, so I would encourage anyone who's interested in finding out more how we can utilize C Click Fix. We are paying for it already, so we might as well make it work to its best advantage. The second thing I have is I have some similar concerns that, uh, Yvette Brock brought up about Dennis Black. I was wondering if you were in, uh, if, if you read my email that I sent you regarding him and what he does, his contract, et cetera, like that. I think I sent it about two weeks ago, and I would really like to get a response on that.
Yes, I do have a, a response for you. And let me just say that, uh, Dennis Black, just, just, I mean, answering to you as a council person, uh, Dennis Black actually came in, um, working as my executive assistant along with, uh, Jennifer Williams, who we've, and since hired, um, Rhonda Glover in our office before we went out for COVID. Jennifer no longer, no longer is working in that capacity, but Dennis has continued on to work in that capacity with me until the end of this fiscal year. Um, at the same time, I have put it in writing, everything that he has done and everything that he has helped us with. Um, and also too, as it relates to his responsibility, as it relates to, to me and my office, understanding that, um, when I took office in November, we didn't have a transition team. So he, uh, came in along with Jennifer Williams as my executive assistant to, uh, help me out in the mayor's office. So I will be putting that in writing, um, to you and responding to Yvette as well.
Okay, and one other thing is, um, in the transparency mode, if he is a contract worker, council was supposed to see that contract, okay?
Yeah, well, he, he didn't come in as a contract worker, so we, I, I think that as, as we've been, we've been talking kind of back and forth, you know, just having clarity. I think you, you've even posed a question to the, the city attorney as it relates to, um, me having Dennis work in my office, if he did respond back, so.
What I'm saying, all I'm saying is that he can be your personal assistant. I have no problem with that. But he can be paid with city money, taxpayer dollars, if he is not, uh, uh, a member of this community's, uh, or this employment situation. So.
You want, we, the, the city clerk did, I mean, the, the city attorney did answer back in writing, and I think what you're saying is.
He said he was not a city at least for employees?
Yeah, but I.
That was my response from the attorney. So I, I don't want to get into an argument with you over there. I just want some clarity, because I've been asking since you came in the office. And you speak of transparency, I want to speak to you. That's all.
No problem. I have no problem with that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Washington, do you have anything for us?
Not at this time, no.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim Howard, you have anything for us?
Yes, I'd just like to thank all the employees at City Hall, uh, Police and Fire for doing an exceptional job. I know it's hard for everyone, especially working from home. And, um, it's been pretty difficult. Um, loved ones have passed. Uh, so I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. They probably don't hear it enough, so. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. And just say, stay safe. That's all we, that's all we want, just to stay safe.
Yeah, I totally agree. All right then. So just, uh, just a couple of things for me as it relates to, and I think I, I kind of alluded to it as it relates to the City Hall opening up on June the first. So we're going through that planning right now, that planning process in the council. You will have that information coming forth to you. Um, we, we, we have our team assembled. Uh, the city of Clerk is a part of that team along with the Treasurer, the DPS Director, the Fire Chief, and the Police Chief. Um, as we're moving back to bringing people into City Hall and how they'll be allowed to come into City Hall. Understand that City Hall, the lobby area is pretty small, so we will have some controls. We will have an auxiliary officer at the door, kind of working with people coming in and out of City Hall. And, um, all, everyone that comes into City Hall will have to have masks on and also two, uh, gloves. So, um, we have sanitizing stations that we've, uh, put up here at City Hall, and we're working on, on getting more sanitizer. And also too, before we open, the, like, two days before we open, we will have a sanitizing crew here, and then that crew will continue on as it relates to, um, sanitizing the building when the building is, is not in use and then getting us prepped for coming back into the building over the weekends as we're working. Um, as it relates to the census, Courtesy Barr just said it right off. I think we're doing a great job, but we can do better. Um, I didn't know that we were actually at the numbers that we were at as it relates to, um, two thousand ten to now that we're already reached that, that level. I think that, um, we, we should be at a hundred percent. I know that, um, it, it's kind of tough right now and where we're, where we're at, not being able to go out and, and meet up with people. But as council, I think that, you know, you guys are, you, you, you guys need to, writing your own areas in your district. Um, and I'm glad to see that this initiative is being taken by Courtesy and, and her team to connect with you all. But I think that you need to take responsibility in your district and work to get people on the line, whatever help that I can be from my office and, and so on. That's what we want to do. Um, as it relates to DPS, DPS, um, has went back to work full-fledged. Um, and know that each person that comes into City Hall now, the Police and Fire, and this has been, since the Police and Fire has started backup work, where they never stop work, I'm sorry, that, uh, each person comes into those, um, particular, um, departments, they have their temperature checked, and we will be doing the same thing here at, at City Hall, but DPS is doing that as well. And we'll be taking it a step further and actually having the evaluation form each day as, um, a person actually comes into City Hall and, and, and come into DPS. Um, so grass cutting is starting. Um, the tree removal program is starting. Council, I'm asking that if you have a list of, um, folks that, or, or places that you need trees cut down, please put that in writing, and let's take it a step further. Anything that you guys need from the administration, if you're talking to the administration about something, like George Williams, like Councilman Williams, you said that you've been dealing with the issues in relation to water for two weeks. Well, as the, as the mayor, I should be hearing about that to be able to help you and streamline that process. Just CC me on that. That way I'm in a loop and I know what's going on. I have no problem with you guys talking to the administration directly, but as the CEO of the organization, I need to know what's going on so I can help you as it relates to getting anything done that you need to get done. And lastly, as it relates to the Building Department, a wonderful thing has happened in the Building Department. Carolyn, uh, Wilson, that is our lead cashier over in, um, over in the Treasurer's Department. I know, Darren, you don't want to lose her, but we're gonna try to work it out in between. She's actually coming over into our Building Department, and she will be leading our administrative piece over in the Building Department. We've also hired, um, and we're in the, I'm sorry, we're in the process of hiring, uh, um, another person that actually used to work with Bucelli. Her name is Tina. I don't know Tina's last name. Anybody know Tina's last name? It's on, on the call. Work with Bucelli as well, so we have some his, we have some history, we have some knowledge in the Building Department as we're still working to, working with the HR Department to, uh, identify a, a chief building official. But we have been in contact with the city of Wayne, um, as, as, as we're looking at the city of Wayne and the city of Ecorse now to lend us their building officials, and we consolidate, maybe consolidate that, that effort to save us money. So I'll be, I'm coming to you with the plan as I'm laying it out before we open back up, uh, on June the first. Any questions, any, from any of you all, of what I've said? All right, hearing none. Do we have a, we have some closed session items, correct?
Yes.
All right.
And, um, the attorney, and he said, uh, Attorney Eric will need to be muted into the closed session. They both will need to become, will come into the closed session. He wanted me to say that.
All right, and then do you have any other department hits that need to be involved in those closed sessions as well? None. Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Move.
Councilman Williams? Support by?
Support by Kim.
Councilwoman Howard, Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Howard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wiley?
Yeah.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
And Council, uh, Councilwoman Washington?
Yes.
All right, perfect. To the general public, we're gonna go into a separate room now, virtual reality. They can take us all at one time and put us all into one room, so we don't have to necessarily get up and walk around and stuff. So we're going to a separate room for some closed session items, and, uh, we have to come back into general session after that. So we don't know how long it'll be, but this line will still be open. So, uh, Phineas, Troy, you guys have been doing a great job. Stephen, you guys do your magic.
All right, um, those who are going into the room, um, I just want to verify, we have David, uh, going in with all the council members. And is it Eric?
Yes.
Okay, so then, okay, here we go, going to the.
It's Mr. Carrington and myself.
Uh, Carrington and yourself?
Yeah.
Forgot about Darren.
Forget about the money.
I just unmuted Eric as well.
Yeah, I've got Eric and, uh, and David. Awesome. So I'm gonna open up the room now, and I'll stop recording while you guys are in the room. Um, there will be, uh, Chisholm, please alert me when to bring you guys back. There will be a ten-second delay, um, and you guys will come back to the main room.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we gotta hit that?
We gotta join in, yeah.
Sorry, I forgot I had a, a Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Um, the next item is gonna be item B under new business, and is to vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session. Ruiz?
Move, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Shaw, supported by Mayor Pro Tim Howard. Roll call, please.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
We have five yays, Mayor, in one day.
Motion carries.
Item number C is to vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session. Perry?
So move.
Moved by Councilman Williams, supported by Councilman Shaw. All in favor? I'm, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wiley?
No.
Councilwoman Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington?
Yes.
And Councilman Shaw. We have five yays in one day.
Motion carries. Any other items?
No.
All right, hearing none, call for adjournment? Motion by Councilman Shaw, supported by Councilman Chisholm. And, uh, thank you guys so much, Councilman Chisholm, Tracy.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice job.
You're gonna get off here before anything happens.
Great job, great job.
Roll call, please.
Um, Council, the Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
We have six yays.
All right, we're out of here. Everybody's safe.
Be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.